It takes four votes in the affirmative for any variance request to be approved. We have two area variances on the agenda for today. Members of the public will be invited if they would like to speak on the area variance request. During the public comment period, which I will tell you when it starts, you have to go to the microphone, over to my left.
Just that one.
This one.
Oh, that one.
Okay. To my right and your left. You must state your name and home address, and you're limited to five minutes of time to speak. It must be related to the area variance request only. We have to have your name and home address so that our clerk can have that information as she transcribes the meeting. At this time, I will ask the clerk to read the first petition. We ask that petitioners do come to the front here, to the microphones right in front of me. State your name, home address again. You can add anything you would like in terms of information to be shared with the zoning board. There'll be time for the zoning board members to ask questions, and then for the public comment section. So, please go ahead.
The petition of Christopher Hayes, 22 Ellicott Street, Jamestown, New York, for an area variance to allow for the construction of an enclosed porch on parcel 387.12-4-31, located at 22 Ellicott Street and owned by Christopher Hayes in the R1 Zone. Section 300-0305C, bulk and setback regulations. Minimum front yard setback requirement is 25 feet. Proposed front yard setback is 5.1 feet.
Thank you. Would you like to prestate your name and home address?
Christopher Hayes, 22 Ellicott Street, Jamestown, New York.
We did get all of the information, but if you would like to share anything additional with us before we ask questions, that's fine.
I don't have anything additional to share, but I have nothing that I'm aware of.
Okay.
What can I add?
Okay. This is an area variance request again to construct an enclosed porch. I think everybody has gotten that information. Anybody on the board have questions? Okay, Mr. Maraklia?
Welcome, Mr. Hayes. I just had, well, actually in the packet, I don't know if you had submitted whatever, but there was a picture of a house on Kings Road. Did you submit that?
Yes, it's on the corner of King Street and Health Place.
And what was the reason?
It was just showing that the neighborhood has many houses that have sort of different variances that kind of match what I proposed.
If you didn't submit a photo of your house.
I assumed, I thought that it had.
Yeah, I looked up on Google Maps, it's smart, you can figure out street scales and stuff. So, you already have a concrete pad out there, and you have the initial porch over that. So, you're building on that pad.
Yeah. Yeah, originally when I bought the house in 2003, it was a double-decker wooden porch. Soon as I got on the full offside, I was at front of the head, there was, I hadn't been right in front of that right up since I walked in. Remember getting the sidewalk when I first got here, those posts came off. Very soon after I got in front of the front door, and then over the years, I had to replace the top deck almost completely with a bit of the rod. And then many years later after that, I found out that some of the concrete pads were still there.
Do you have to approve that to be there?
Yes, definitely. The concrete pad was all burned with the different things.
Thank you. Other questions?
Just more curiosity, I know you had mentioned about siding. Do you siding this at the same time?
Yes, I think I'm going to say this is going to actually, I'm going to hold the whole office aside, including the top floor.
Is that scheduled this year, or?
I would like to start it on that.
Do you do that work yourself?
I've got a brother-in-law that's got this on the house.
Good morning.
I was just on the phone there.
Any questions?
Just looking at the zoning perspective, I think there's a whole lot of difference as far as being able to the public way. I think that having forethought, because it's down where you did it. Since the current consideration, I see no further issues given than the variance that obviously lead to the setbacks. It's outstanding for the process.
Thank you very much, Mr. Darcy. Just a question here from the chair. This is not going to be any larger of a porch, just enclosed from what you had originally there. Is that correct?
Correct.
And then what about how you will, will you have eaves troughs that go out toward the road? Are you going to make sure that any drainage off of that porch goes away from your neighbors?
Yeah, there's other areas in this house.
Okay.
Also, some of them, and so the drainage, the ones on the outside, in the house as well. I plan on going to install something above, and this is real testing.
All right. Further questions? Seeing none, this is the time when we allow for public comment. This is on the area variance request at 22 Ellicott Street for an enclosed porch that will be closer than allowed by setback requirements. The setback will be 5.1 feet. If there's anyone who would like to speak in favor of this or in opposition to it, you must go to the microphone to my right and your left. State your name and home address, and speak to the setback request only. One more time, is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak on the request, maybe from Christopher Hayes at 22 Ellicott Street, Jamestown, for an area variance request? Seeing none, we'll close the public comment on this request. Is there any correspondence?
No.
Okay, there's no correspondence. At this point, we would be looking for either further questions from the board or a motion on the area variance request.
Is there a motion to the area variance request?
And that's to approve it for, again, this setback. Is there a second to that?
I'll say.
Thank you, Mr. Panavico. Any questions on the motion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the board.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Henning?
Yes.
Mr. Maraklia?
Yes.
Mr. Panavico?
Yes.
And Chairman DeTong.
Yes. Your variance request has been approved. Please work with the zoning code officer to make sure you get the proper permitting before you start the job. Thank you. We have a second area variance request for a number of parcels. And this is again for bulk and setback regulations. I'm going to have the clerk read these, and again, we'll follow the same process as before. We would like the petitioner to step forward. Sit here, tell us a little bit more about it, or a representative of the petitioner, and then we will allow for public comment at a certain point. Please read the request.
The petition of Long Associates Architects, EE55 Sheridan, Doravilingsville, New York, 14221, for an area variance to construct five two-family dwellings on parcels 387.06-7-15, -11, -10, -9, -8, -7, and -6, located on Spring Street in the R2 Zone. Section 300-0306C, bulk and setback regulations. Minimum lot size in the R2 Zone for two-family dwelling is 10,000 square feet with a minimum lot width of 70 feet. Proposed lot sizes are as follows. House number 1, 387.06-7-13, and 387.06-7-11. Lot A width, 60 feet. 10 feet lot width variance requested. Lot B area, 7241 square feet, 2759 square feet, lot area variance requested. House number 2, 387.06-7-11 and -10. Lot B width, 60 feet, 10 foot lot width variance requested. Lot B area, 5543 square feet, 4457 square feet, lot area variance requested. House number 3, 387.06-7-10 and 9. Lot C width, 60 feet with a 10-foot lot width variance requested. Lot C area, 8124 square feet with 1876 square feet area variance requested. House number 4, 387.06-7-9 feet. Lot D width, 60 feet with a 10-foot lot width variance requested. Lot D area, 8125 square feet with 1875 square foot lot area variance requested. House number 5, 387.06-7-7 and 6. Lot E is 82 feet, plus or minus width, complies, no variance requested. Lot E area, 7353 square feet, 2647 square feet lot area variance requested.
Thank you.
Hi.
Just introduce yourself again, and name and address.
Those are multiple, sorry. So, Matt Long, Long Associates Architects, representing Coting and Stelling. Just wanted to apologize, last time I was on vacation, trying to call in, and the wifi was terrible. So, that's a bit of a hard thing to explain, so sorry for wasting your time without making fully explaining. And here now, I'm walking through the project, and tell you what's going on, and what we've done since the last meeting as well. So, this is part of a project going in, actually tomorrow, for funding, because of the deadline, for New York State Homes and Community Control. Thirty existing units exist between nine sites that's about at the coding zone. Two of the units are doubles that your board previously approved and reapproved, I believe in July or June meeting, for front yard and vermonts. And those are very similar to what we're doing here. And so, what we landed on, we didn't defund it last year, unfortunately. Got feedback from our consultants from Jamestown as well. When we were looking for more housing, there's clearly a need for housing. So, in conjunction with the Department of Development and with the Chicago Land Bank, this parcel was brought to our attention as one of the parcels, or combined parcels, that needed, or would be a good place to put housing, in a new built place, and housing prior. And we said, oh, great. So, we started plotting, and we thought made sense there. So, one of the things that is a little different about your zoning code is if you have a lot that was constructed on prior, the only way that your zoning code allows you to construct again there is if you're doing a single tenant house. So, that's it, if you're ready to shape a lot, you have a lot that's 10 feet wide, or whatever it is, maybe 50, okay, you can do it, make it work. The problem with this is that the zoning doesn't fully gel with the lot width. So, this is in an R2 zone. Uses allowed in an R2 zone are single-family and double-family houses. Double-family houses were landed on two, because one, it's better use for density, and two, it works well with the client for the number of units they needed to make the budget work. So, the problem with the R2 is that you don't have that exception. And the issue we ran into when we started to analyze this, the lot widths that are required by code being 70 feet as well as 10,000 square feet, that doesn't really work for most of the parcels in Jamestown. So, unfortunately, we're kind of stuck between, you know, trying to make the best proposal here, but then using, typically, the zoning board reveals that in our, our understanding, others in here is, you have something that doesn't quite meet exactly descriptively what's required by code, but in the spirit of it and the intent that you're working with, you know, all elaborately to get to a point where you think it makes sense. So, just want to walk you through quickly, you can't see the TV yet, and there's about an inch left of extension cord, so I can hopefully help you with that. So, we came here prior, and in that packet, we had five, I'm sorry, seven parcels, or seven houses, we'll give it that back. But the site plan prior had seven houses on the spot, and they were fronting Spring Street. So, we, I'm just going to read some of the comments, and we, just want to, you know, put it all out there, because I know people are going to speak about their opinions on this, and after that, everything, you know, we're watching. So, the notes that we got after the meeting, the reasons potentially we're going against it, as well as our comments, and the comments that we received from the neighbors. The issue, one of the issues was, the density is too much. So, we went back, we went back to our planning consultant, and we said, to make our budget work, what's the least number of, I didn't have an answer to that at the time, what's the least number of apartment units that you can do that will make this budget work with our planning? So, unfortunately, for you guys and for me, we still needed a zoning variance, because we landed on tiny units in total, five houses. So, what that did, the 70 feet is prescribeded by code that you need for width. That landed us with four of the houses, house number one through house number four, at 60 feet. And then the northernmost house at 82 feet, you did your own shape a lot. We made a decision that, hey, listen, this is a little strange up here. You want to get as close as possible to getting, you know, in the spirit of 10,000 square feet, or at least we'll be more of a light. So, that's where we landed. And as you can see, as you can see here, the houses are relatively equally distributed along the street. And some other considerations that played into this as well, as a lot in Jamestown is, it's a pretty big hill. And prior to COVID, and COVID is a big excuse, but it's the reality of construction now, things were much more doable and horrible. Prices are insane, and they change. You can even excuse, yeah, you can do it on a hill, new construction. We're adding tons of costs, and we're trying to make that work. And part of it as well, and the parking was one of the concerns. Putting parking behind the houses is not really feasible from a cost perspective. So, we made a decision to terminate the driveway at the rear of the house in conjunction with the planning department, and the P O D, and the building inspector at the time, which is, but later, later you now retired. The determination was, this would be accepted as parking part of the house, you know, comparison to the house. So, we did that. The, just to run through what's in each house. Again, this is client-driven, and also driven by the requirements of the funding source. So, one of the comments was, well, these are really small houses. And you should give people who are living here, nicer spaces over there. So, we had to operate within parameters of funding. Parameters of funding for a one-bedroom apartment span between 600 square feet, not record here, so I want to give you an approximate, to around 800-ish of plus square feet if that's there. So, we're spreading within those parameters. You can't go over it because they won't want us. So, we're doing what that would identify as opposition, they want to serve as one-bedroom apartments. We're working with the housing zoning in the area, which is the use, which is for the two-bedroom apartments, or sorry, two-bedroom, two-unit buildings, which is the max that we can do. And we're also working within the parameters of how it's laying out. So, a lot of things to show. They're trying to make everyone as happy as we can. No one's ever going to can, you know, but we try the best we can to be as happy as we can. So, we got to that point. So, another thing that we did, when we talked to Mark Brodser, he, yeah, he's over there, Mark. So, Mark went over this with our engineer and our team, and we discussed drainage. So, unfortunately, there's no dedicated storm sewer on the streets. So, we worked with him to provide the minimal amount of runoff to adjacent areas, and most notably, you know, had runoff that's going to the parcels behind, that was the question that came. So, our original plan had the driveways going to the street, and the roof leaders going to the rear of the stairs. Either way, it's going to perky the surface, so some of it is going to be found down the hill. So, if you look at what it is now, it's a big grassy hill. There used to be houses there. I don't know where you were discharging, but old construction could have been anywhere. But as it currently stands, everything on that parcel is being handled by the land and running towards the adjacent street, not Spring Street. So, our proposal now, anything perky as we're constructing, is going to go to Spring Street. It's going to roll down the street, and go to the next intersection if you picked up by the storm sewer that exists there. And again, this is us not, we're operating in that, you know, people say, you're doing this or that. We try to be as elaborate as possible, and we try to get the answers to, that suit the conditions. So, we did that as well. So, that's the, another note was access for second-floor residences. There's a question at the other meeting, is whether or not you can get to the rear. And we re-reviewed this, and we created, introduced in our last planning board meeting, a little landscaped stair that goes to the rear. So, this is, this is the pottery of the site. So, each of these little lines represents the foot that drops from the right of the page to the left. So, in our previous submission, one of the comments, I believe by one of the residents, is, wow, the board was, well, what can people do outside? We haven't a room. So, we took this, and we generated a 20-foot black space for the residents in the rear yard, and they can actually, at the time, have parking on a hill, or have a table, whatever. So, there's a green, there's a green space back there. And this black strip here is a landscaped stair that'll allow both residents to get to the rear. So, we had to address that, the site conditions, and what's giving us providing equitable distribution for people there as well. So, the, the other thing, the parking note, is one of the other things coming up. I might touch on that a little bit. So, based on data from Coting and Stelling, one-bedroom apartments are not really used much at all of ours. The amount of money that the rents are set at, as long as, in conjunction with the one-bedroom, the max that they would see is 0.4 spaces per unit. And that's, that's at a high. So, for the two units for the driveway, one driveway with park two cars, maybe one space would be used. So, we're trying to do something that's appropriate for the development, and we're also trying not to incur unnecessary costs and potential drainage issues by blocking a driveway down. If you see a lot of James town, or if you look down the hill, and it'll flatten out. That's going to screw with the drainage, it's also a problem. So, it's always a balance of what you're trying to do to make everybody, you know, if you're doing one thing, you're pulling the other, and it's questionable. So, we think that we've come to a great, great sort of compromise here, and we, you know, thankfully, the planning commission, thankfully, the planning commission worked with us, and we talked through, and they agree that this is a good compromise that needs to be taken. So, that's specific to the variances, just touch on them again. The requests are for the four parcels from number one through five, would be for the variance of 10 feet in the lot width, 60 feet versus the 70. And they'll be to comply in the lot width, the other one with the 82. But just based on what the parcels are in Jamestown for the double-family house, it's almost impossible to construct. There's no lots that are suitable for double. There's not a lot of land and that in width that's existing for lots. So, we're making the best decision we could here. And unfortunately, some of the lot areas are not, you know, half of what it would be from, what I can read here. So, for house one, it's 2759 variance. Two is the worst, which is this house, it has this weird, like, flying lot here that's owned by Fleet's management. And so, that's a lot that would provide a deep rest to an improvement that's just existing there on the site. So, this definitely would have been the same, if you had control outside, it's just, it's just there. And the rest of them are in the high 1,000s to mid-2,000 range of variance. So, again, parcel presented to us is the best we can, to make it work. And I think, I think compromise is just kind of where we're at. Compromise the budget, compromise to make everything work. And I, from the parking standpoint, I just don't see anything issue at all. The person with one car, they're a partner, they're not a. Yeah, I can see if they're putting up three, four, five, or six apartments. Double or not, as long as they have numbers, I think that's, maybe something we should consider a little more. And the last thing I want to talk about briefly is the why. So, area limit, we're showing what the site is here, it's in this red area, it's a project site. There are adjacent houses across the street, we're showing, yeah, there's setback here, if we're meeting. That was approved by the planning commission. One of the boards up there has adjacent parcels that are also not conforming. We have a table that's up here as well. So, we pulled the repeat within that street, like adjacent side street, so on Spring and on Crossman. So, we took this data from G I S. Some of it was a little off, we had that issue, but it's a place to say, there's a bunch of them, 11, 11 and 13 for G I S. These are, to be, to be clear, these are two-family, not just one-bedroom. So, two-family, the lot width, 60 feet, which is 40. 40 feet for the one, 60, 62-ish. And then there's 13 to 15 Crossman with 36 and a half feet, and then 23 Crossman with 60. And again, the lot areas are on the right, so these are, I'm trying to figure it out.
Can you use the touch screen?
I can hear that. Like it's, like it's like touching top there, because I don't work on Alexa. All right, um, yeah. So, these are the addresses, as we're seeing the table there. We're kind of, we're kind of hitting right where what we're proposing here, around the 8,000 is where a lot of these lots are. What this is telling me, what I think it should tell you as well, is that a lot of the lots in the city are certain that continuously. The zoning code unfortunately doesn't gel with what the city is providing with the lots. So, we're working with what we have, and we're trying our best to get there. That's the end of my, my speech.
Thank you.
Yep.
Time for questions from members of the board.
Just, what's the width of the driveways?
The driveway width in total is.
Individual, that probably.
It was, the size of the lesson, let's be looking at. So, house, or houses two and three, so this was strategically done as well, where they were backing up. So, where they're paired like this, because we would, if we wouldn't have to build a Z K for this, we probably would have got six, because they pair well. But given where we're at, so these pair next to each other. The total width of these is 20 foot wide inches. So, you can park two cars on each one. We're showing a grass strip in between for delineation between it. So, we have those two cars there for each other, so one, two, one, two. House one, I don't have the inside company, it's about 12 feet, is the, what we have. So, it's a, it's a car park plus a little bit.
Well, what is that, what you're working with?
I think that is, maybe, I don't have that margin on this. It may be 10 based on the, the, on the squares that are there. So, there's a trash area, this one, people's zoning board, or about planning board as well, it's about ice cream trash and other areas. So, we decided to try to create the, the best, the best for neighborhood as well, so there's not the, you know, ice or trash everywhere in the place, you know. So, the, the reason that we did the area of the driveways is to have this, because this land slopes so much from right to left on the page, we need to retain the wall here to keep it at the rate of Spring Street. If Spring goes down, goes down like this, on the side down like this, your car comes up here. So, the moment we made the decision that, and this is again from, not the fact that we're actually saying, here's the problem. It's first job, CEO of COVID, all the properties do that for the most part. Problem is, driveways like that over time, slippery, degrades faster. The problem on some base, so we're trying to provide, or making decisions, hopefully provide a project that lasts longer, is better defined for residents here. It was a good time.
Other question?
Could you go to the area review real quick?
Sure.
Yeah, so one of the things I observed when I drove down there, also when I looked at that, it looks like basically across the street, there's five houses in the space, right? I mean, and there's, there's a little vacant spot there to take the house, put it over there. It seems like there's five houses, there's space for five houses across the street. It's very similar to what you're trying to build there, right?
Yeah, I think if you, as a, as a good observation, it's maybe even more, so one, two, three, of the length of lot, it was most likely a house at some point, I would think. So, four, five, plus maybe even six, if you count off a little of this down here. So, it's like, again, we're trying to, we heard what you said, we heard what we meant, with what we thought was reasonable community context, instead of, maybe you can, if you watch better.
And you, you mentioned that there's nine other building sites here, I said, you're maybe eight, this is the fact. But it's a place to say, and, and again, you have variances for the other two properties as well. One would square it up more, more, but anyway. So, is it fair to say that you can't do this project without seeking a parent? There's not, are there other places in the city where you could potentially build that would be within the confines of the zoning code, or?
It's, so, we had been done an exhaustive search of the parcel, I'm not going to stick here. But we, when we did go to the G I S mapping software, which a lot of people put around, we found two things that were at the pages above the site. One was presented as opportunity from the county and the Department of Development, which is what we'd like to see. So, I think the, the short answer, the easiest answer is no, I don't think this happens in many other places. And I think that unfortunately, it's the way code is written, it's tough to really develop a way that, you know, it's falling to family, but it doesn't actually work. When we did just a brief sidebar, we were entertaining at some point, which I'm basically feedbacking here, we were not happy. Um, a, looking for a use variance, which would be, just to educate people here as well. Um, so R2 has the maximum of two-family in each house. We were entertaining maybe doing apartment building, better due to land, which would require a use variance to be multiple, say eighty percent of that. And then we landed on, you know, we don't want to start to look like, like, prove the same, we're going to jam whatever we want here. You know, we're really going to get everyone angry, unfortunately, we can go to the top, it's flexible, it's like. When we deal with that internally, it's, uh, this makes more sense for the contract. So we've gone, right, it doesn't matter, that person, I, I, there's some of the developers are architects, I'm going to go, yeah, it's, uh, let's give them a lot. We're doing, we're trying to do as responsibly as possible, depending where you are.
To the, to the, to the. What's the purpose, just, just being generally about in a lot size, isn't it most critical? Because that's kind of what I'm trying to understand as well, what was the point of having?
Sure, that helps you kind of separate and, and, and know what's going on in each zone, right? If you have different residential districts of different sizes, you're going to be able to limit, um, what kind of housing goes in a particular area. So traditionally, uh, an area has been, uh, one, same with kind of residences, you have a larger lot size, because that keeps out high density housing, your, your, your armpits typically do it is. That does probably, that's, yeah, it has.
So it's, so.
It's just an identifying characteristic of a certain kind of land, of, of, kind of, growing areas that make sense to them. You've got more infrastructure, you've got by the roads, you've got public walkings, those kinds of things. Um, it's where you tend to want to see your higher density house.
Is there's other multi-family housing in that neighborhood, right?
Well, so one of the things I, I actually looked at, um, prior, you know, prior reviewing this, was what was here before on this, on this, and, and, uh, three of the five parcels had four, about four unit buildings on them. And so there was more dense housing, uh, across five houses, there was, uh, at least four additional units that was being proposed here. And so, uh, and, and, as I said, in response to the density, they reduced the amount of units going in. And what was here prior were, uh, three, four unit buildings as well as, uh, single family. So, uh, this really is, like Matt said, a compromise that really tries to reach, um, the goals of what the feedback was about, about density and about not leaving a character in the neighborhood. And so, uh, that would be the other kind of piece I would, I would add, because the zoning for the space, as Matt said, was, it's, it's prohibited to build R2 housing. And so doing what they're trying to do in terms of combining lots and meeting, uh, the threshold that other properties on the street have is a really big effort. And I even want to point out, the county's, uh, county planning department also reviewed this project, and did comment that they applaud the developer for closing, uh, to revitalize this neighborhood within, you know, within the hightest of the neighborhood. And so, uh, the zoning is prohibited here, but these folks are really trying to make good, make an effort to, to kind of make a character.
Other questions?
Oh, I just got, just to help follow up, just for clarity. Um, you were talking about the site greenish, it's still going to go on to Spring Street?
Right, that's covered, it's, uh, it's coordinated with, uh, city engineer. So the, the roof leaders as well as the, uh, driveway will drain this street. Um, everything runs downhill, from north to south, it's picked up by, apologize, I don't know if it's Jason Cross Street. I had, but everything Jason Cross Street is running this last year, their hardware is, it's, it's.
And then the other question I have is to retain wall on the first two properties, how, how high is that? About what? It's taller than me, it's pretty.
Yeah, it is, actually I had that answer. Some, or if you do the best I can, so. So the side elevation of. The whole, oh, it's actually, so that.
Yeah.
Um, right, so this is looking at the rear of the house on that side. You'll see that with the retaining wall on the flats over it, you have a floor, floor here somewhere, I liked. And the, maybe, if I have the, probably, yeah, nine, so nine foot four, from the, we call it basement level, where it's down over here, to the parking at the top side, which would be implied at the first point. And then there would be a fence above it, which is, uh, I always most of my, uh, four pieces, one in yards.
So that, the retaining wall, so that's the, which is typical.
Yeah, I, whatever, whatever my engineer says, so it doesn't always screw it up, yeah.
Then it would be grass?
Yeah, so the, part of the, let's see if I can pull up the, pull up, I have a landscape plan in this package. But we're proposing, and again, from, you know, planning comments and entries on landscape plan. So I'll just zoom in on a couple, but a little one. So this area in the front, the block, the dots are. Yeah, those are like little grass things, I'm sure, this is grass, this is grass. So the grass is the, like, I think it was the little dots. The hexagons are, I'm going to be exact, let's see what we call it here. Little maintenance plantings, uh, I think they're identified though, the, the, things were called out, would help hold the green. And some of this is, the problem of, uh, these type of projects is you gotta be so much upfront. And then you go, you get it, and drag it in, okay. So a lot of the engineers come still, but they would be plans to help hold, kind of help hold created or core ratio. Um, so there's that. And then the, the rear portion of the parcel is proposed to be fallow, which is, uh, just the same as it is now. And we kept, uh, sort of, this cloud of, sort of, natural area. And again, that's out of, uh, again, off of the block, but what we've seen, it's pretty hard to maintain all this, and people grow stuff back, you're still getting your homeowners still. They're putting, putting up trash, part of the duty, but how to keep people from using it. Just to keep the feedback in the file as well.
Okay. Any other questions? One that did come up, uh, in the last meeting was about additional green space, and it looks like just because there's less density, you have more green space, especially on that corner, that ice-shaped lap, correct?
We do, and we also made, like I, I said before, just to, you know, the lap to it, we made the changes where we created a plateau at the rear as well, which was between, uh, three, three, five, three sixty-four and sixty-three. It says, plateau is out, it's twenty feet of grass in the back that comes off the porch. So if you use whole green space, it's actually, we're sort of on this on our end for, we're sort of, I didn't mean to disrupt this, I thought I said, yeah, you can use it back there. We both did, again, we said, hmm, yeah, you can use it as well, because I'm done, we, uh, we revisited it and, uh, were able to tidy that up in our recent mission.
And there was one parcel that you said is really kind of landlocked, but not owned by your client or anyone else, and?
It's owned by the lands of, the lands of Piedmont. Ground, uh, Piedmont, formerly the lands of Moore. And that is the one half parcel, I believe. You can't remember, will you? Mr. Inefficient, this year, I heard him on the call prior to your play, but I don't think he had a couple property on this one. So we, hopefully we address this adequately for everybody else, not adequately, the best we could. Well, we, we chapped it out, yeah. Yeah, so that's, that's an odd call there, I don't know what's, uh, you know, it would be good if we could, if we could, if we could, if we could wrap it right now and, um, push them to our.
All right, other question? At this point, we will open this up for public comment. Again, this is on the area variance request, uh, for five units. Uh, and, and it will be only on the setback requirements that are, uh, in the, in the variance request and the total lot width, and the size of the variance request for the units, because they are in the R2 zone, but they're less than what is required, uh, by our current zoning code. You have to go to the microphone, state your name and home address. Please limit your comments to five minutes, and they must be limited to these variance requests only.
Can I ask some questions first, before I?
Please go to the microphone, state your name and address, yes, you can ask questions, of course. I think you have a bit of that microphone over there, sorry.
All right.
Yeah, you want me to do this?
Yes.
I can't see what I'm pointing at. The voice behind the boards. Well, I've got a lot of questions about the topography of the land, from, from Spring Street down to the bottom of the land, what do you?
Can you state your name for a little?
Oh, sorry, my name's Andrew Nickerson, uh, I have a few properties, adjacent to everywhere around this thing. Um, I acquired one of my house, what, five years ago, when the neighborhood was actually pretty crappy. Um, I ended up acquiring another four unit right next to this whole project that's going on. Um, it's been a very uphill battle with all the personnel in the neighborhood, but ever since I acquired it, it's been on the ups. The neighborhood's actually starting to look pretty nice, uh, we have a lot of people getting involved, it's kind of nice. Um, when it comes to topography, uh, what was, what was the top of Spring Street to the bottom, what, what, what do you claim that's, the difference in height?
So from, so this is from survey, uh, geography survey divided by recent survey. At Spring, roughly.
Twenty-five feet.
Say thirteen seventy-five, and it drops off to thirteen fifty-five. Or so maybe about twenty-two feet in this lot, uh, to the rear line.
So you're saying these buildings are going to be about ten feet down from Spring Street? So that's almost fifteen feet of concrete that's going to be below these, these buildings facing all the properties on Main Street? So for all, for all properties on Main Street, we're going to be looking at a big concrete wall. And you said something about a flat land, well, that's going to create a lot of runoff. And, uh, I've been reaching out to DOD about the property, there's that one, that one awkward parcel that's very close to Crossman. I don't know if you guys are aware, but that's the massive spring coming out of the water. Um, it, it is a unique area, I've been battling that water, I actually just got done with all the drains for my property to control that, to be able to use my lot next to my property. Um, so I mean, if we do something with that lot in the back, I'd like to get it from people, but, I mean, you guys are saying to run, doing all the runoff to Spring, that's impossible. I mean, that's quite defying right there.
Um, how would, I don't know, do you want to talk, or do I, sometimes?
You can address that with your name.
Yeah, so, can you, Mr. Nickerson, can you see this?
Yep.
Can you see it from there? So that's the rear of the typical house. So the tops of the parking would be this fence over here. This is the house, so the, uh, one gentleman questioned how much it drops, so from here it drops five foot four. So everything that is where this fence is, is where the parking is, that's pitched back towards Spring, at Spring. Spring, the roof, the leaders would go and be pitched off the front, so everything at the top, which is the entirety of the structure, would be pitched that way. I mean, I guess for argument's sake, you could say that the rear patio is just going to drain to where it is, but I don't think it's making any condition worse than it was prior. I mean, really, we're taking all the land that was, that is under the roof, and parking is just grassed out, and we're taking it, we're moving it, putting it in Spring, so it's, I would think it would be probably better than before, because we're taking footprint in the house and driveway. So I think it addresses, hopefully addresses that. Um, for seeing a wall, yeah, you can see the twenty-five foot wall or twenty-eight foot retaining wall between the two. So you have two of those, and then one at the north, and then you would also see a house here, and then you would see a green hill next to it, so it's, it's a mix of things. Um, I guess regarding, I think, I did hear your comment on the other, uh, meeting that I've been, was calling in, okay. Or, um, the spring, I mean, we haven't gone, and I'm sorry about the, I had to look at the camera, trying to. So, yeah, you're talking about house number five, correct? The number, which is, but Jason, did this be regular?
Yeah, it's almost in old shape.
Yeah, so unfortunately, I really cost someone my, it's, that's your time to turn around. So we haven't done this color geotechnical investigation yet, where we sampled the soil. Um, our team's comfortable enough with, for now. Uh, there are the houses there prior, um, we can bring in Phil, we have Phil commenting for, and we could be able to reset that foundation level on some base to deal with it. If we did something.
Philly would stop the spring though, would it?
Uh, like, like, we were, we would have to work around something that became an unforeseen condition, which at this point, we can only operate with what we have, but, I mean, our civil engineers are, number one in the world, they're pretty good, and they, I've worked with them a long time. So how can we be able to work through something? And I guess if pushing the shove and we got into it, and there was a problem, we'd have to come back to you guys and say, we have to move this eight feet to stay away from something, or then we have to come back to you. But with the, with what we have now, um, at this point of the development process, which is design and development sort of documents, where you use, you know, a design, if you're at this point, to make a proposal, see if you can put more money into it, we're okay as a team where we're at right now. Like, we would, of course, if we address something during the building process and permitting process, we could work to alleviate any issue. That would be potential problem.
Now, just to make it clear, what are these houses intended for? What type of personnel is this intended for?
I think that would be up to the client to tell us, or I don't know if somebody from Stella or Co would like to come up and, and, and talk about that.
My name's Tom Rini, I'm the executive director at Stella. Um, so the housing, these, uh, twelve units will be for our supportive housing, um, clients. Um, basically, people move out of the state hospital system into our twenty-four hour supervised residences. We work with them between a year or two years, there's no maximum amount we can work with them until they're ready to transition to a western level of care. Um, then we have treatment departments in the community, um, so, uh, staff will go in and work with people, you know, um, could be daily. Um, and then, once, again, we work with people for a couple of years in that program, and then, once they're ready to transition to a new level of care, then we'll have to be there with this housing, this supportive housing.
So they will have employees attending to them?
Correct.
So when we claim that there's only going to be point four parking, that would be inaccurate, right? Because you have the employees there, we have an abundance of traffic to do so, but.
Well, I mean, they're not going to be there for overnight or anything.
Right.
Yeah, they, they would be there.
I mean.
So the parking issue, I think, was addressed with the fact that the people who will be living there may not have any vehicle at all, or, so there still will be parking available for people who are coming to visit or, or the support.
I mean, isn't the intention to help these people get on their feet? I mean, I, I would hope their goal is to get a car someday and be able to.
Well, that may be the case, but that doesn't really.
We're assuming that they're not going to happen.
The variance request, so we have to do, we have to look at what's going to be put in here, and the variance request is only dealing with the, the setback and the fact that it's less than ten thousand square feet in each unit. We can't address, who buys a home, you can't address who buys a home next door to you or whatever, they're really not part of this.
I mean, depending on the personnel that go in, if it's like a person, if we put in elderly people, we're probably going to have a quieter neighborhood. We put a bunch of college kids in there, we're going to probably think, so that would affect what type of policy and what kind of factor it might, would be.
Right, but this only addresses the fact that they're two single bedroom units, and we can't, we can't determine, again, whether it's going to be.
What, what resident in here is going to be able to argue so? I mean, if you're asking our opinion on what we believe in, I mean, we've all dealt with some crap in that neighborhood, it's kind of rough neighborhood.
I, I'm sure, but unfortunately, this isn't the forum for that. The forum is to talk about whether or not you think that these two one-bedroom units on less than what is ten thousand square feet and less than the proper setback are, are fitting in the neighborhood. Do they change the character of the neighborhood?
That would be exactly what I'm.
And that's, that's what, what we think.
That would change.
Physical structure would, would be what we're talking about.
Unfortunately, we were never.
We can't, we can't have people from the on-aid community come up and state your name and home address. First, let's, let you finish, you have about one more minute, if you want to address anything.
So at what point were we supposed to address these concerns? I mean, I love the idea of helping the family with the low income, but the moment you put five of any type of building, that's going to change the landscape of the neighborhood.
I think there are a number of processes, Mr. Nickson, you can go to city council, you can go.
Well, I've been trying to, I've been trying to, I've been trying to ask about these properties for almost three years.
But when it comes to this, this is only regarding that it doesn't fit the zoning code. That's the only thing that this board can address. We can't address anything else.
Well, I just think it's unright how fast-tracked it is. If you're telling me I can't say this, at what point was I supposed to say something else?
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, why, what was that meaning?
There, there's only, like, you know, you, you. There, there's only, like, you don't have the ability to do that. It has nothing to do with us or the city. If someone wanted to come in and build single family residence
I would do it.
And post, and put the most terrible people you could ever imagine in there, there's nothing we could do, because it's properly zoned for that reason. Okay? The, the only reason we're here today is because they're asking for setbacks, they're asking for less square footage on a particular parcel, and they're asking for less width on a particular parcel, right? We can't get into who's gonna live there and say pretextually, we're gonna deny your variance because I don't like the type of people you have living there.
That's a concern of mine.
And, and, and if we, and if we did do that, then the city would be open to a lawsuit, because we're only supposed to be evaluating the setbacks, the, the square footage and the width. You know, and then we can't get into who's gonna live there, who's not.
So I mean, the locals say...
And, and there's really no opportunity for anyone to litigate that or, because it's quite frankly, it just, you don't get to decide who lives in your neighborhood. As long as it's properly zoned.
Well, that's kind of why I bought the four unit. I love the idea of making my neighborhood better. So I mean, we're, you know, and when you went Stella, when they said they only get the grant money, and they had X amount of units, it's not necessarily about what's best for that. They had to reach that number, so they sprang to me and got the seven units. I love the idea they sprang to me and got a little bit five units, but you gotta think about the people. If you're telling me that we, I can't hear who they are, that's incorrect. I mean, I might be at the wrong place.
Well, it's not.
Why?
We're only...
So my question was then, when was I supposed to say something?
Well, I have a say over who lives next door to me. There, there, there could be someone to test me who wants to buy the house next door to me. I couldn't prevent them from doing that.
Well, I would love to, that's a homeowner, I mean...
But you can't, it's America.
Um, thank you, Mr. Nickson, you have exceeded your time, and I'm sure there's other people who would like to speak, and I'd like to give them that opportunity. If you would like to speak either in favor or in opposition to the variance request, area variance requests for setback and total square footage only, you can go to the microphone, state your name, home address, and you have up to five minutes to talk about that.
Well, I just, one last question, I, I think I had my answer, I just got by, but so at what point am I supposed to say my concern about that? Like, zoning is impossible for us to argue.
Right.
I mean, so you guys won that, there's not one...
Well, there's, it's, it's not a matter of win or lose, it's a matter of, again, addressment in the proper context.
Absolutely, I agree.
So, I did mention that if you had issues in your neighborhood, you can go to the city council, you can go to the housing committee, you can go to the planning commission. This is not the place for that.
Yeah, but I've gone there and I, I've helped you, and I've reached out multiple times.
Well, I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Nickerson, but again, this is, we have to deal with the zoning here, and we have an area variance request that we have to talk about.
The whole project was fast-tracked, that's why. I think we want the money, but is it right now, like, there's nothing we can...
The zoning, the zoning board would like to continue with the public comment. If there's anybody who would like to speak in, either in favor or in opposition to the area variance request, you can go to the microphone, state your name and home address, and talk for five minutes on the variance request. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak?
I just want to bring up a couple...
Name and home address first, please.
On the Concon, eight thirty-seven Spring Street. I also own two other lots right next to mine.
Thank you.
Um, I just wanted to bring up, what about what Drew said about the, do we really want Main Street to have a big brick wall? When people go by, that's where everybody comes through town. Do we want that?
Unfortunately, that again, isn't addressing the setback issue or the total square footage. We can, we can make a comment to the architect and to the client that they may want to have something that looks a little better, but that isn't something that addresses this particular area of variance request. But that's a good comment, and I'm sure that they'll take that into consideration.
And also, the kind of people, I know you don't want to hear this too, of those kind of people that are gonna be down there, we're down the street from a school. Do we want this from, down the street from a school?
Again, it, it's not an issue that we can address with the variance request.
What about this natural spring? Do we want to address that, or do you don't want to talk about that?
We, we tried, in the last meeting, I think there were comments about how there was a natural spring, there was concerns about runoff, and I think they did address that, and they did work with the city DPW to make sure that that would be addressed appropriately.
Is that okay to build on the natural spring then?
I'm only, I'm telling you what they told us, the changes they made, and the fact that they said there may be more environmental studies that have to be done, and they may have to move one of those buildings. But again, that's, that's something that, right now, it looks like it fits into the setback and the variance request that they have.
So I, if they start building, this gets approved, they start building, and then probably find out this natural spring is in the way, would we have given other variance too to, so they only got fifty feet on one and seventy on another, or how's that go?
Ms. Concon, I think you heard the architects say that they do environmental studies before they would start any construction, so that they may have to then adjust, and yes, they would have to come back if that included less square footage or less of a, of a setback requirement, correct? You are correct.
I could speak to this, but we would, I mean, but one's not right. You know, but one, and two, I mean, we can't, we couldn't, we would lose all reputation for it. We're not gonna build two new houses being funded by all these people. We're gonna build it on something that's gonna be an issue. And we would have to take the information and address it to come, we don't have anything now of it, um, maybe be in that area where it is, I don't believe, I, I got things that qualify it, so yeah, we would come back, of course. If they had to, you know, if that's not a medical, but the worst case, if that area had a little more or something, we'd have to talk to the state and say, we can't do it. And also, you know, we wouldn't want to just jam it in there, you know? Tom and, uh, Chris and the residents there, or whoever else, they're gonna have a leaky building from day one.
Do you, do you want to address how our environmental engineers would be able to find that information and, and address it before the construction period?
Yeah, I mean, you would do, we would do a bunch of, it's called task force, and they drill, and then they build very, they drill very large holes into the earth, see what compromised of, and they build through. And we do a slew of those in every house's footprint and in every driveway where we're gonna build stuff. I don't know the exact amount, but we would, you know, if my structure's on the air, if you're looking to do, they could do two or three houses, and now that we know this, we might wanna say, not we might want, I think we definitely want to say, okay, it sounds like there's somebody who has problems on the other side of this. Residents came to us, we want to do every building, and so we don't want to get, don't want to get in the ground and just have a problem. So it's easier to deal with one little hole than a, a big excavator site and stuff, that's all we're gonna do. I don't want problems in life, possibly.
Ms. Concon, do you have any further comments?
Yeah, I have one more thing. So just because now there's that many houses across the street, I mean, there's a reason that the variance is for seventy feet. We live in a different world than what we did years ago. So why would we wanna go back and do less, push them together? It's just something I want you to consider.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to address this area variance request? Please state your name and home address before you speak on the variance request specifically.
My name is Ronald Holton, I live at eight sixty-two Spring Street, which is directly across these buildings from where your new plan is built. I know, I can't say what I'd like to say, but on these driveways, no way possible can this work. That is steep, and we live in Jamesstown, New York, which is winter most of the year around, and there is no way possible to get down the hill and back up without causing an accident or something, because you're gonna have to definitely have a four-wheel drive to get out of there. And going down, you, if you slide down, slide into somebody else's car or whatever, then there's gonna be a lawsuit. I don't understand, Sam, how you think you can do this? I mean...
I think that the driveway issue, they did change it from the last time they were here, because they know that they can't go down the hill on those properties, but we, uh, that, again, doesn't really speak to the variance request. But I could definitely discuss again for you.
It's all part of the project. I mean, this is all gonna be funded, it's all free. It's all give, give, give. I know somebody who wanted to buy this land, who was gonna pay taxes, and then you receive instead give, but all you guys want to do is give.
I'm going to have to ask you to, again, address the variance request. If you have concerns about the setback or the total square footage, that's the only thing that we can address here. We can't address other people buying the property or any other issue.
Okay, there's one question I want to know. Since there was no notice of going out, so we could speak what we want to, and I know why there wasn't a notice going out to us as landowners, because you're afraid we're gonna get denied again.
We have to provide, uh, a letter to those who are within a hundred feet of the properties, and I believe there was proper notice given.
Directly across the street.
Well, I think there was proper notice given. We have to do it based on the address and the name of the person who owns the property, and we have a whole list, and, and those letters do go out ahead of each of those.
I got four days to do that.
So, um...
Four days notice.
And we do, we do try to make sure that those go out to the property owners, and, and that's in, in conjunction with the fact we put a legal notice in the newspaper, uh, so that there is a notice of what the meeting agenda is.
Well, if, if you guys are so proud of this, this should have been in the front head.
I'm sorry, you can't, you can't just speak out of turn. I'm sorry, you have to go to the microphone.
Can I take another five minutes?
And, uh, I, I, I need to know if you have any other comments related to the variance request. You have about one minute left.
I don't have no comments about that, but we did not get anything to, for all of us want to say.
Well, I think that if you didn't get a letter, that we should make sure that when you go to the city clerk's office during business hours, you check to make sure that the name and address, the proper address, is, is listed for you.
Well, we got this one.
But that, that is the only thing I can tell you at this point.
I don't believe there was a meeting for what we want to say.
Well, but we have to address this meeting. So do you have any other comments on this, or do you want to, uh, just take your seat so somebody else can speak?
Well, I don't want this. I couldn't address that.
Is there anybody else in the audience who wishes to speak on this area variance request on Spring Street for five units that don't meet the setback or the total square footage requirement? One more time, is there anybody in the audience who wishes to speak on this? Seeing none, we'll close the public comment. At this point...
Can I clarify just one thing, just to make sure everyone understands this accord as well? Uh, Mr. Rod, Rod was, is there, so the, the driveway, uh, so we actually changed that early on because of exactly what you said, where they would be going down a hill and having a problem with the rear. So when you come off of Spring Street, you go right flat, stayed flat, and that was the wall that, uh, Mr. Nickerson was talking about. So you're flat, when you acknowledge it was a problem going down, so we tried to address that as best we could. So that's important, if you're covering it, hopefully.
Do you just ask, do you enlarge it a little so they can see the, the driveway and where?
Yeah, so, sure, yeah, so, a typical house, these are the two houses, oh, Jesus, really? Name is Nickerson, I'm sorry. So, hopefully, that's a typical, the houses are next to each other. So Spring Street's on the right over here. You come in, and this is the same, well, actually, the tiny even higher over here, because it's pitching back towards the street. So you drive right in flat. We were thinking about at one point going way down this hill and kind of stopping, but as I said before, it was, uh, just to reiterate, um, code, you know, I know a lot of, my house goes down a little hill where I live too. It's terrible in the winter, and it's, it degrades faster. So we said, oh, maybe let's, let's make it hopefully better and try to, try to design around it. So hopefully that's, uh, hopefully that's good, and as much flat as it can be there, so that's a pretty nice feature that I would like my property to be. So, that's...
Okay, thank you.
I got one more thing I need to know.
We can't speak anymore, we'll close the public session, I'm sorry.
If another point came up, I...
At this point, the, at this point, the public session is closed. We are not taking any other public comments, I'm sorry. Uh, we have now moved to the point where we have to make, uh, a decision on a motion. Uh, I'm sorry, oh, I'm sorry. We'd have to see if there's any correspondence, and have the clerk read anything that's come in.
Um, I do have an email here. Um, I am a resident and property owner whose home directly borders the parcels listed in this petition. I oppose the request of variances to reduce minimum lot width and lot size in order to construct five two-family dwellings on Spring Street. My opposition is based on the following. Number one, overcrowding and density. The R two zoning code establishes a minimum lot width of seventy feet and a minimum lot area of ten thousand square feet for good reason. To present over, to prevent overcrowding, protect neighborhood character, and ensure adequate light, air, and open space. The applicants are requesting significant reductions, some lots falling short by nearly forty-five hundred square feet, allowing this many undersized lots would set a dangerous precedent and undermine the zoning code. Each proposed dwelling would likely have multiple vehicles. Adding ten families to the undersized lots will significantly increase parking demand and traffic congestion in an urbanized neighborhood. That's a lot of, that, there's a lot of parking taken by parents from the level of elementary school also to keep in mind. Number two, neighborhood compliance and direction. The neighborhood is largely composed of single-family and two-family homes, most of which comply with the current zoning code, and in recent years, especially following the demolition of certain outdated or non-conforming structures, the area has been moving further in the direction of compliance. Approving such large variances would now would reverse the progress made to bring properties into alignment with the standards that protect our community. Number three, precedent for future development. If granted, this variance would open the door for future developments to sidestep lot size and width requirements. We keep the intent of the zoning code citywide, which is to maintain balance. Once, once exceptions of this scale are granted, enforcement becomes meaningless. Alternative suggestion, if development must occur either to the board to only allow construction of no more than two two-family houses on the parcels, provided they are placed on adequately sized lots that conform to the zoning code. This would create new housing opportunities while still preserving the safety, character, and compliance of the neighborhood. For these reasons, I respectfully urge the zoning board of appeals to deny the requested variances as written, and either reject the proposal outright or restrict the project to no more than two two-family houses on properly sized lots. Thanks, Keith Garvin, twenty-four Crossing Street, Chief of Staff. In addition to that, we did share, um, the notice that was sent to the planning commission regarding the county's, um, opinion on the subject. Do you want to leave there or...? Thank you, Michelle. Um, dear Chairperson Lauren, this letter is in response to your two-year municipal zoning referral received in full by this office on August twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-five regarding a site plan to convert vacant space into transitional rental apartments at tax parcels three, seven, point six zero dash one dash six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, and thirteen. These parcels are located within the R two zoning district. As one of the designated staff to the Chautauqua County Planning Board, I reviewed the above-milled referral to the county since it is within five hundred feet of the state road. I have reviewed the pertinent inter-community and county-wide considerations with respect to this proposal and its effect on the relevant concerns that are listed on the general municipal law, two thirty-nine dash one. Based on this review, I find that the proposed action would have no significant county-wide or inter-community impact, and that the proposal would be a matter of local concern. However, in order to help the city with its decision, I offer the following informal comments. Number one, it is recommended that any proposed construction and development efforts consider the appearance and character of the neighborhood properties with regard to the project's building design, layout, landscaping, signage, lighting, et cetera. Number two, any necessary access changes to and from this property should be designed in accordance with generally accepted engineering standards to minimize potential traffic safety problems associated with vehicular movement between the property and adjacent roadways. The appropriate highway or transportation departments should be contacted if there are any driveway stitches, et cetera, that should be modified. It is recommended that the city ensures that any parking requirements that may exist are met by the applicant. Number four, we applaud the applicant for revisiting their site plan and attempting to meet the city of Jamestown zoning code requirements while also trying to meet minimum funding source requirements for this type of land development. Number five, we applaud the developers for proposing to revitalize an existing neighborhood and implementing smart growth practices. This project is consistent with recommendations within the Chautauqua County Housing Market Assessment and Development, Development Strategy, which can be found here in the website, is listed. If you have any questions regarding this matter, please contact our office. Respectfully, Courtney Don, Senior Planner.
Thank you. At this point, we would be looking for a motion on the area variance request from lawn associates, architects, uh, for the properties on Spring Street in the R two zone.
I'll make a motion. Before I do, I just want to, like, go through my rationale for doing that. And also, uh, because I think it's important that everyone understands. And I, I don't know how the, why I am gonna put forth what we should do with it. We can't look at who's gonna be housed in these places. Uh, we can't look at, we can't do that. We're, we're not allowed. Um, and the fact of the matter is, if someone, if we look at single-family residences... Um, and the fact of the matter is, if someone wanted to put single family residences on those lots, they could. And we can't do anything regarding who lives there. When we're looking at an area variance, there's really five things you have to take into consideration. The first is the character of the neighborhood. Will granting this variance result in an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood? And I don't think it will because I think that the, the variance being requested is modest. It's, I think that the structure is based on what I saw, fit within the character of the neighborhood. And, um, right now, it's a vacant spot with overgrown, uh, vegetation.
Have you seen how Cole takes care of their properties though?
It's going to be, I don't think it affects the character. And if you look across the street, you could basically look at five, whether they're single family or dual family, I don't know. But there's that much space across the street.
I can't believe more a lot of people.
Please hold your comments. This is time for the board members to, to make their comments.
Regarding other alternatives, I don't think that there, I don't think that there are other alternatives uh, based on everything that's been discussed today, that there's simply not a camp of the, uh, dual family home. Um, is the request being self substantial? That's the third factor. I don't think it is. Um, and I'm talking about the specific, uh, variances being sought. I don't think that they're substantial. Uh, does it impact the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood? I don't think it will. There's discussion about rain, um, you know, currently it is just fine on the ground, probably going down Spring Street toward Main. Uh, the fault on the roof is going to get directed towards Spring Street. Um, I don't think that there's other physical environmental conditions that are negatively impacted by this. And then the fifth is whether this is self-created. Uh, you know, certainly they're seeking out a space that's not currently zoned for that. So I mean, maybe there's an argument that it's self-created. This is also different than a new variance where all the factors have to be met. This is a weighing test, in my opinion, looking specifically at these factors without taking into consideration who's going to be living there. Um, I think that just based on what's being asked for, uh, this physically, the criteria by, I'll move to approve the variances that are being requested.
Thank you, Mr. Panabino. Is there a second to the motion to approve the variance request, area variances for the Spring Street properties?
I'll, I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Moria. Are there questions on the motion and the five characteristics that were described by Mr. Panabino? Seeing none, clerk, please call the law.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Pangan?
Yes.
Mr. Moria?
Yes.
Mr. Panabino?
Yes.
And Chairman Ms. Tantua?
Yes. The vote is five to nothing. That means that the, uh, variance requests have been approved. We now go to the next step of the process. Uh, so we'll wait for further information from the architect and the funding source. Thank you. We're going to adjourn the meeting at six fifteen. Thank you.
Thank you very much.